Good evening, welcome to the Special Committee of the Whole for Monday, April 15, 2024. We are in council chambers and it's a Zoom meeting, so we have a hybrid meeting. Roll call, Councilor Piazza, Councilor Sheffield, Councilor Norris, and Deputy Mayor Depot are here. Called the meeting order at 7:00. New business referrals, so we'll have budget presentations for tonight. And the first one up is planning and zoning, so Leslie.
Good evening.
That starts on page 43. So Leslie, walk us through.
So I think that the one that, the section that has, the cost center, that has, most of the budget is, are things that are either personnel-related or office supply-type things. The contractual services is the one that really is, takes up the bulk of anything that might be considered, I don't want to use the word discretionary, but a lot of special projects fell, have fallen under the auspices of the Planning and Zoning Office in the last year and are continuing. They include things, they include the following projects, these are the bigger ones. We have the Thames View Park, Upper Thames View and Lower Thames View. Upper Thames View is including the, dealing with the Costa House, which we were here before you, on that as a bid, is that a bed waiver? We were here before, oh, maybe it was Nate 24, about a month ago. And then we're going to need to look at getting somebody to design that park, make the connection, design and make the connection to Fort Griswold, and making sure that it is a park that also respects the view of the lower park. The lower park is the docks, both the construction and installation of the docks, construction documents and installation of a, and a handicapped accessible way to get from Thames Street down to the park. And I'm sure all of you know, it's, it's about a 25-foot drop, so that's a significant, it's a significant need to design it correctly and safely and build it by code. The other is, so that, that ramp needs to be designed and then also needs to be constructed. There is the Groton Estates project that we're in the process of working on now with, and trying to get that straightened out, so that's continuing. And then there is looking at the extension of the Birch Plain Creek Trail, and that will be going into next year. So that's, those are covered in these, in these items. We also have resiliency capacity building, we're trying to do as much as we can between Sierra Patrick and myself in terms of getting people together to understand what it is that we're doing, why it's important, why it matters for five, 10, 15, 20 years from now, and why doing it now is actually the least expensive way to do it. The, and then the Gateway Project on Bridge Street is ongoing. Most of that project has been paid for by grants. We're going into the final stage of that, of the actual implementation of the tactical urbanist installation, so that we can, we then have real-time data to be able to work off of that and say, this works, this doesn't. And it's a whole lot less expensive to do it that way than to install something that might meet everything on everybody's computer and everybody's radius measurements on their engineered drawings, but doesn't actually end up working right when you do an installation like we're planning to do. You can move a cone and you can move a planter, you know, another foot over so that things can actually work. And those are the kinds of really valuable, that's the kind of really valuable information we get. Also, it introduces the public to the idea that things can be different without, without the sky falling. You know, it lets people get used to the idea that things could be different, and we also find out if it's not going to work. So those are the contractual services that are, make up the bulk of this budget. That's, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, question from the council, Deputy Mayor Depot.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a few questions. Under professional development, it looks like you budgeted 6,150 and used 6,000 last year, this year. Is there something specific that that increases for that to 8,000?
Yes, there's, since COVID, when, when COVID trainings were, you know, everything was done on Zoom, and most of them were free or close to free, just to keep people being able to keep up with their required continuing education credits, and they've slowly been building back up. This year, there is, every year, Sierra and I go to the CNU Conference, which I've been going to for years and years, and that's always been worthwhile. And it's where I get to go and bring back really important, cutting-edge research and information on planning. And depending upon, depending upon what the topics are that are being covered by the American Planning Association, which is the national association, I'm hoping to at least be able to have the option to go there, if not for the entire conference, at least for a few days. They have actually gotten, their, their courses have become much more relevant over the years.
So, so under that category, professional development, it is continuing education credits and conferences and?
That includes transportation and, and hotel and nothing, I mean, you know, an Uber from the airport to the hotel.
So that leads to my next question. The line underneath for utilities and fuel, for the last two years, we haven't used a ton, 400 the prior year and 750 this year, but we're keeping the budget at 3,425. Is there a reason we anticipate actually using that budget?
So we just, we did not have a vehicle in the department, and we were just offered a vehicle recently. And it is one of the things that we, we don't use all the time, but we do use when we, when we need something to, for instance, move all of the, like after City Day, when we had all of the native plants and there were some left over, and all of the things that we use to engage people on City Day, that all has to get brought over and brought back. And we have found that Public Works is very busy that day, and they're doing other things. And so we were offered a vehicle, and a lot of the things that Sierra and I do now, in addition to things like special projects or the planter project that we do, when we bring the planters around and fill them up and go and get all the soil and plants and stuff like that, that project is expanding, and so we're needing a vehicle for that. So we're finding that where we've had to sort of scrimp before, and a lot of times the, one or the other of us would use our personal vehicle, we now have the use of a municipally-owned vehicle to be able to do that.
So is the, is that vehicle going to be a new one with a loan? Is that the money that's coming, that's increased in vehicle operations?
It's already been used, I think, by at least two departments already. It's at the?
So, because I'm looking at the increase in your, in the planning budget and the economic development budget for vehicle operations and supplies, it's going up $2,000 in economic development and 2,000 in your budget for planning.
It's for, it's to cover fuel, it's to cover mileage and, and repairs to the vehicle. We will also use it to go to different events around the state, not just for training, but also, there are a lot of, there's, there are a lot more programs that are going on now around the state that are of interest to us because they're things that we would like to bring here. But we want to go and make sure that they are, that they actually, you know, what is entailed, what would we have to do to prepare for, is it worth bringing it here? The other thing is, I, every time I've had to go somewhere or do anything, I've always used my vehicle, and it was never worth it to me to put anything in to recoup costs, so.
Right, so, but when I look, when I add those numbers up, the utilities and fuel and vehicle operations and supply under your budget and the economic development budget, which are intertwined, that's $785.42 a month. So is that how much we're expecting to spend on gas, or does that include a car loan?
Does that include a what, a loan?
Or is it? Like, what's the, what does that cost?
So we, so the city already owns the vehicle.
Okay.
Okay, part of this was, they put some money aside for maintenance, because I don't remember, Scott, do you remember the age of that vehicle?
I believe it's probably around 2005-ish, not 100% of the year that, the old truck rest.
So we are, so it's, it's an extra car that's come from building, and so we put aside some money for maintenance if it needs it, maintenance and repair. And we're not, and we don't have a history out of Leslie's thing, I don't, I don't think we had a real problem with it under you, right?
No, we, when we took it over from Mary, we, we sent it back to the Ford Garage, and they had it, they was, just what they had to do, I think it was like maybe a couple hundred bucks that they had to, whatever they did to it. Now it seems like it's been working really fine since we got it back.
But it has been through two other departments.
Okay, so we think 785 dollars a month is a reasonable amount for the vehicle that you're going to use in your department?
I don't think that's how it will be spent, but if it, if it fails, and we've been counting on it, it's a, it's a problem. And anybody who's ever owned a car more than 10 years old knows that when things fail at that age, they tend to cost a lot.
So is the plan from finance, I guess, this would be the question, so is the plan, if this car at some point during the year goes kaput, that we have enough money in this budget to purchase another vehicle?
No.
No, this was just a vehicle that was unused, so I think the mayor determined that it'd be best if, because it still had some life in it for local stuff, for the planning and zoning and economic development to use just around town, because they currently did not have a vehicle at all.
And then when this, if this, when this vehicle fails, then we're going to put it to auction, and I'm not sure if we'll replace it, it depends on whether or not I have another vehicle, a spare vehicle.
Okay, I just feel like the increase?
I'm not buying, I'm not buying a new vehicle for planning and economic development.
One other thing is, if we didn't put that money into the budget, and it did fail, and we did have to get it fixed, it would have, it would still be coming out of our budget, and we would have to be taking it out of the other things where we're actually hoping to do project work.
Okay, I just feel like that's a lot of money for that expense, but I'll move on. Under contractual services, so I have concerns, we have all these projects that we have put money in your budget for, and this year, the plan was to spend 135,000, we only spent 39,890. And this is the first year we're going to be increasing taxes in quite a while, and so I have concerns about increasing this budget line when we previously haven't been able to spend it, due to delays in projects, I, I understand all that. But I, I find that frustrating, that we haven't spent the budget last year. I always find this frustrating in the budget, when we have a budget that we didn't spend last year by a lot of money, and then we're going to ask for even more money. And so I guess, my question is, what are you going to do different this year to make sure that that money gets spent than you did last year?
So a couple of things, one is, some of the projects that are included this year were not under my watch last year. But that aside, RFPs are going out, some of them, they've, they've all been written for the upper and lower Thames Street, and so those are projects that will then need to be funded. The other thing is, last year we were hoping to do a charrette, and I cut that ask as low as I could for budget, out of respect for the budget and the taxpayers, and it's not the kind of thing that you can, like, pay for 10%, you know, we just, we can only afford 10% of a charrette, so we'll only pay for that, it's kind of an all-or-nothing thing. And I tried contacting everybody that I knew in the field who works on charrettes, and that budget was just not even close during these times.
So does this, this budget also covers a charrette?
It doesn't cover a full charrette, but what we're hoping to do is to run a mini charrette during City Day, so that it's, we're trying to make this work in a way that is both cost-responsible, but also can play off of other things. But it's an expensive endeavor. It means hiring people who know how to draw, people who are experienced urban designers. We're not asking them to do a full report. So there are things that would add on to the cost of a charrette, and we're, we're trying to do, we're going to try and do it during, during City Day. So it'll only be a one-day instead of a three- or four- or five-day project. I mean, we've really shaved it back a lot, which is, we keep trying to figure out, how do we get this, how do we do this, how do we engage the most number of people we can engage and get people's input without, without breaking the bank. So that's one thing. The other thing is, we will have additional expenditures attached to things like projects, parcels of land that are related to the Birch Plain Creek, the trail. So we'll need to get, we will in all likelihood need to pay for the mapping, so that we, if we're looking for either to purchase or to get easements over properties, we would be responsible for those expenses. We can't expect that a property owner would pay for those maps, which are quite pricey. Some of them are in the neighborhood of, you know, there was one that was done out of Public Works that was roughly $100,000 for the mapping.
Okay, I, I still, I, you know, we went through a whole presentation about the charrette when, when we originally priced it out, and about how much it would be, and this whole thing about the council approving the extra money in the budget last year for the charrette. So it's a little, again, frustrating that then that number was not close enough to get that actual project done, because you put the time in, as I'm sure it took a lot of time to put that presentation together, and then we didn't end up doing it. So that, to me, is a little bit frustrating, to then approve a budget where you're asking for more money. I am, all these projects, you know, they're all great projects, and I want them to move forward, and I, you know, support them. I find it a little frustrating, the timeline that we're on, and that the budget is not more accurate in terms of projecting what we can actually get done in the year. And I know that there are things that you can't foresee involved in that, but?
You're right, and that's one of the things I'm trying to do differently this year, is to make sure that we have the money to be able to do these things.
My, I think my last question, because I, and I know that, that, is the economic development budget is separate?
Next week, uh, next, yeah.
Okay, so I'll try not to ask more questions about that.
Economic development will be on the 22nd.
Okay. Under your salary, that number is increasing almost 10%. Is that, I know that in those salary numbers, that's not always just salary, or it's not always the exact salary, but is there a reason that that's going up 10%?
When I took this job, it was in the middle of COVID, and there were very few jobs being offered anywhere in Connecticut. There was, this increase represents?
Here, let me answer this.
I was going to say, it's probably a question for you.
So I think I talked to council about, during the, during the collective bargaining agreement, we increased salaries with the, in the unions. We also then looked at our non-union salaries in this, as part of rightsizing, and to ensure that we brought the salaries up to where they should be and to be competitive, that's where that increase is. And that is about a 10% increase in this case.
So is that, is that 10% truly representative of the actual salary increase? Because like I said, I know that sometimes there's, this number is not exactly the salary that the person gets paid if there's, like?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm done.
Anything else? Okay, Councilor Norris, and then I'll come back.
Can, if you, so I'm just picking up on what Deputy Mayor said here. So in the contract services, because this is two years in a row now that you've spent a third of the budgeted number, you made the comment that in fiscal year '23, I guess, some of the projects weren't under your purview. What projects were those that you were?
The, the intensity of the Costa Properties projects I was involved in from an advisory position, but not a supervisory position until this last year. And it was getting a hold of, getting, really getting a, it's very complicated.
Sure.
I'll just leave it at that.
So when you, so when you look at the Costa property, you have lower Thames, upper Thames, right? It used to be the Costa property, so you have that, we have the demolition of the Costa House, we have the engineering study, that we do have a grant for, for the lower part. We also have some money for the docks. But we also, on the bottom part, on the lower part, we need to be able to get that landscaped so that we can get ADA accessibility to the docks. So that's all the different projects just in that one thing.
Got it.
And then we're also trying to move forward, the Groton Estates, Groton Estates has been on, been on our docket before Marion Galbert was the mayor. So we're trying to get that finally done. There were some issues with the deed, that's been resolved now, and so we have the purchase and sale agreement, we're doing some final things there. To get that done, then that will allow us access to get through Groton Estates, to get us to these other properties that we're going to need to get rights-of-way through in order to finish the trail. But those are the kinds of things that Leslie's working on.
So in contract services, going up, I guess, 70,000, is any of that for new projects, or is that entirely 70,000 for current?
It's a difficult question to answer, because the ongoing projects are both, in a way, current and in a way, new. There was a, getting up to speed on the Costa projects, for instance, and what, what's required for the grants that were issued, were applied for and issued before I got here, understanding what that all took, understanding what exceptions were made during COVID. It was a lot of minutia that we, you know, that I needed to get up to speed on, having had nothing to do with the project at all, and it's really very complex. And so the goal is to actually get these projects done.
Okay, thank you. So I do have one other thing, and this is not a you thing, all right? But in looking through the budgets so far, I'm trying to wrap my head around salary adjustments. Was a salary survey done? And if it was, is it possible to get a copy of the results and also the methodology that was used to come up with those figures?
Mindy, you can do, you can address that when you come up.
Sure.
Okay.
So the short answer is yes, but Mindy will talk about it, and then we will provide information to the council.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Councilor Sheffield?
I guess this question may be towards Ron. Any unspent contractual money, does that go into the general fund or that will stay? Okay.
Yep, anything that's not encumbered at the end of the year, where it rolls back into the general fund, fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all right, thanks. Leslie, stay where you are. Scott, if you could come up. We're going to go to boards and commission, that's on page 40. So that is down, and the reason I have them both here is because they're liaisons to most of our boards and commissions, with the exception of Beach and Parks. So we have a, what do we, we have a decrease, it went from 42,800 down to 42,000, and we've removed, you removed money out of Conservation, right? Conservation Commission?
Yes, I did, just looking historically at what was going on there, so I, you know, figured that there was, you know, some room to, you know, make a slight reduction.
Okay. Questions or comments from the council? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Just to clarify, so the, and I think, I think we go over this every year, because I just want to draw attention to it, the zoning board of appeals budget stays the same, mostly because we can't predict appeals, and they can cost a lot if they go on for a long time, correct?
And we still, we, we still have the same outstanding legal case that's been going on. It was literally my first night working here was when that started, and that, we don't have, I, I know that our legal bill's going to be high, I don't know what it is, and I do feel like-
I don't know what it is, and I, I do feel like, I say the same thing every year, I'd rather have the money to pay it than not and have to come back. I'd rather return money to the, to the general fund at the end of the year than have to come and say, I predicted it wrong. It's, I know that our attorney is working on this case. I do get updates once in a while, but it is very slow moving and I keep hoping that it's gonna settle and be done with, but it is our staff that's on the line on some of this.
So going back to your comment, you are correct that you don't know what mitigation may happen, and if we do have it, it is gonna be expensive. So that is correct.
So not to harp on my previous comments, but for me, this expense, year to year, staying the same or growing makes sense to me because we need that money for something we can't foresee. I find the other budget increases frustrating because if I were a taxpayer, it looks like we're, we did a poor job of planning that budget. So, because those are things that we know what the project entails and we still didn't spend our budget. So just because this is right after, like, to me, that's the difference between these two things, and that's what makes the other one frustrating, is that, that this is truly something that costs that we need to have, that if we don't eat into our other budgets, and is truly something that we can't predict. Whereas the other, I feel like should be a little more predictable of what we're gonna spend on projects and, and planning. And then for this, the office supplies and advertising did go up a little bit, so I, so that makes sense, I, I guess. Do we spend more money in that line of the budget when there are more appeal, more cases appealed?
When advertising is generally, it's advertising for applications that are going before the commission that have to be legally noticed. So the teeny tiny print in the back of the.
Yep.
Newspaper. And, and that's required. And we get, we get a lot of comments about wanting those to be clearer. We do try and only post what we have to post and have more detail on the agendas and in meeting minutes to let people know what's coming up and what has happened. But we do, we do still need to, and, and that's by line.
So the, but we haven't hit that budget in at least two years that I can see. I suppose I could pull up the past ones, but.
We have more projects coming in and more people coming in about potential projects now than we've ever had.
So we expect that to increase next year as well?
Yes.
Okay, because it did increase from last year to this year, so.
Yes, and that's why.
Seeing an increase?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on boards and commissions? Okay, thank you, Leslie. We will move to Building Department, which is on page, starts on page 34. The actual, page, page 36 actually is a summary page. So with that, Scott, I want you to brief the Building Department budget.
Yeah, so overall, since, obviously I've been here since December, the budget has decreased overall. Part of that reason or being part of it is gonna be that we're gonna be going one less person on the staff. So Walter is gonna be retiring the end of May. So we're gonna be down to two of us for the inspection side and the admin is, Denise will be in her role. So I think part of the reason, by, most, most of the reason why the cost went down is because we're gonna drop one of the employees. And overall, I, you know, look back historically over the budgets prior to the EB expansion because we know the, the amount of money that was generated from permits. Now we're kinda going back to a, a time before that. So I think the budget kind of reflects, you know, where it's gonna be coming back in line to where it was prior to the, the amount of work that EB did with the new buildings that they put up.
Okay. Questions from the council? Councilor Sheffield?
Okay, uh, I guess there'll be, I guess, a deduction of like about $22,000 for the, for the full-time employee budget, I guess, for that one person. Is that about $22,000 of salary? Page 38, I think it's at some.
And what was the line on?
The current, yeah, uh, full-time employees.
Yeah.
It was at 367 and the proposed at 345. So that's about 22,000 less in salary. Is that the full-time salary cut or is that a?
So based on the position that we'll have, Kevin Quinn, who's been here for roughly four or five years, he's gonna stay on. He gets an hourly rate, but he receives no, there's no medical benefits or, where there's, it's just a straight hourly rate that he gets paid.
Okay, so he's, but he's full, technically full-time, but yet without the, the benefits.
Right. So when, when Walter retires at the end of May, Walters, between Walter and Kevin are gonna split the position in a part-time manner until Walter decides that he definitely wants to stop working 100%. And then Kevin was gonna fill the void back in. So there'll be two of us, you know, 100%.
Okay, so that's where the part-time at 27.7 and the budget at 41.9, is that that split increase on the other end for the part-time employee?
No, it's not. I, I believe the part-time is for, is that Glenn's position? So Glenn, first been the Blight Officer?
Okay.
So we cover his, his salary comes through our budget.
Okay, so he's getting an increase from 27 to 41.9, is that, yeah? That's, well, that's, well, yeah, that's projected, but they're proposing, okay.
His salary's not changing.
Okay. But it actually decreased from 48 and now it's at 41.9 from the actual, is that?
So there was, for the part-time position, there was a, a actual part-time employee in addition that was helping with the office. And that's where that, that 48 that you're looking for, that the actual was for 23. So the Blight Officer, I believe, is around the 27. However, there is additional budgeted amounts for additional part-time services if they are needed for office help or other things. The way that the budget was built for full-time employees was that even though there are two time, two potential part-time employees, that is really one position, as a one full-time position, that potentially if both of the part-time, or two part-time, or maybe one goes full-time, if they were to leave, you would hire an assistant building official. So it was just budgeted to make sure that we took the hire of if there was an assistant building official hired or the two part-time combined to make sure we were covered in case that that position does go to, back to a full-time position. So that's why you don't see a change in the benefits piece of it because of the fact that if we do hire a full-time person, there will be benefits that will be provided even though the two that are part-time will not have them. So it's just kinda how that was built out with, with the changes that's going on with the personnel.
Okay, so the salary for that person retired, and so far that salary hasn't been replaced, but has that been budgeted or no?
So we dropped the salary from two actual full-time, I'll call them assistant, building officials because we had one that was contractual, that was hourly with no benefits, that was potentially a 40-hour-a-week person, but again, depended on the workload and the 100% assistant building official. So the thought process now that the work with, with some of the big businesses in town has gone down and that we're back to a normal, so it would be back from the two essentially full-time down to one, and we just wanted to make sure we budget it where if we did hire back out, where the benefits were required, we did have money budgeted instead of just relying on two part-time people for the full year.
Okay, so the salary then will be pretty much at 22,000 less than what it would've been with the other, okay?
For those two positions.
Okay.
Councilor Norris?
So my only question then is, if you had to hire a new one full-time person, do you think you have enough in the salary line to cover that?
Yeah, so that's how we built it, was we looked at both the two part-time positions, what we thought we would need to budget, but also if we needed a full-time, and then we took the hire of the two to make sure that it was budgeted fully.
Deputy Mayor Devoe?
Thank you. Excuse me, so I'm gonna ask you a similar question about professional development. So last year, we only spent 2,500, but you yourself weren't here for a big portion of the year. We had no one in that seat, I believe. Is that the reason that is staying at a higher number or, well, it's going down a, a little bit, but it doesn't look like we've spent that amount on professional development? Do you have certain things in mind that you plan to spend that budget on?
Um, yeah, I think last, I mean, I dropped it, I dropped it going into the, for this fiscal year budget, right? I think I dropped maybe it was 500?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the reason why it probably didn't get spent, because last year Walt was, you know, here and running around, that he didn't have time to utilize going to those different classes and stuff that we go to. You know, between our Southeastern Connecticut Builders Association that we belong to, the Connecticut Builders Association that we belong to, and then there's other multiple, a couple of times a year, there's like, you know, all-day events that we go to and, you know, we receive our continuation credit. So I think the reason why you saw that there was a, you know, surplus of money getting to the end of this year is because Walt, Walter wasn't able to, to go to those classes.
Okay, and then, so I guess this is a finance question. So last year, in this budget in particular, we were without a building official for quite a while, so our budget, we underspent quite a bit in this budget. Is there a reason that we wouldn't or don't need to maybe put more money into vehicle reserve for this budget or, for this department or something else to benefit this department in particular, or is that just not generally done? Or, I'm just thinking, it, we didn't spend a lot of the money because we were without the building official. Would it not be appropriate to put some of that money in some other benefit or have been because the year's ending, but in this department, like vehicle reserves?
So like, we kinda talked about, it will if the unspent will roll back into the fund balance.
Right.
So we do have a reserve set in this department. We did just purchase a new vehicle in December, I believe it was, for the building official. So I think with that reserve of the 7,000 going forward, we'll be in line with an extra placement vehicle because the assistant's vehicle is two years old, I believe, or it's fairly new.
Yeah, I think it was, it was just gotten after I left here, I think that's when they got the car, just, just before I left, so yeah, four years ago or three and a half to four years ago.
So is this increase to 10,000 because the purchase of that new vehicle came out of this budget?
That's, so they actually, there was reserves that were set aside for it. If you recall, what actually happened here was the building official, there was a vehicle that was purchased for that position. It ended up being transferred to Parks and Rec, and then Parks and Rec ended up kinda subsid, paying for the new building vehicle. So this was just what was set aside this year, again, with that little bit of extra money to put it into the capital reserve to start funding that next vehicle that they need. So it's, it's a little complicated with how the vehicles were purchased just because of the swap with the Parks and Rec.
Okay, and then, so just to clarify, for the employee analysis, obviously you're the building official, but the building inspector, even though it's one full-time equivalent, that's two people working part-time currently. Is that? Do you think that's going to be that way for a while or do we suspect that that will change this year?
As far as right now, we have the other two guys. So the end of May 31st, Walter's retiring. And then at that point, there's only gonna be one person, they're gonna split the week. Like Walt's gonna pick what days he wants to come in, and I guess it's, I believe it's 19 and a half hours. You know, not sure, but there's, I think there's a, a cap on how much he can actually come back to work part-time. So whatever Walter works, then Kevin's gonna just pick up the slack. So that's, basically it's one person, but you're getting two people to do the job.
Okay, and then for, for the budget increase for building official, it's because it's, it's not that it's not accurate, it's accurate what we spent, but the actual salary increase is that from the budget year to the budget year? So the actual increase is the 133,900 over the 105,469, correct? Not the 70? The 74,15 is irrelevant because it was vacant for so long.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this budget? Okay, Scott, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, Human Resources, Linda? And that starts on page 24. 25 actually is a summary page. Okay, go ahead and overview.
Good evening, how are you? Be nice to me, it's been a Monday. I'm trying. Okay, so just want to remind you that the three FTEs and the HR department handle 215 people, 160 are union and about 55 are non-union. It's a lot of work, the three folks.
Here's your microphone.
Okay.
Just gotta get picked up.
Okay, there I am, wow, hello. Okay, so interesting budget this year. We're trying to do some good stuff for the city. Office supplies went up only $50, nothing different about what we order every year. Let's see, professional development, that's gone down $2,380 this year. And that is because there were some training opportunities in last year's budget that we've moved over to the big-ticket item next, which is an HRIS system. Let's see, we've got some SHRM memberships that, you might ask the question too here about, you know, why not everything is spent? And the SHRM certifications that are $820, we only pay that if they pass the test. We don't pay for the exam, we pay, we'll pay for the exam only if they pass the test. Employee engagement, put that down, about $500 was 2,500 last year, and that is for us to try to get folks together and it seems to be working really well. Johani, who's the HR generalist in my office, works really hard with the, excuse me, with the events committee to do a lot of different things to get people together. The biggest one's our barbecue in the summertime. But during the year, we do contests, pie eating contests. Have you ever been invited to that? We do Halloween parties and decorating, all kinds of things that really get things done. In fact, next week, we have public, it's the public service week, so we do a big old breakfast for everybody here and over at GU. So that's $2,000 out of the budget, but GU puts in another $2,000 for us. And let's see, the big one this year is Human Resource Information System. We, the three of us cannot keep up with how much work it is to do this all manually. We have spreadsheets. Um, we have spreadsheets, we've got, everything is manual, it's redundant, and it's just, doesn't work for us, we can't get projects done at all. The mayor's been wanting a new handbook and policies and procedures done for the last few years, and, um, even with, uh, we have a new person that came on this year, Sue, who's fantastic, and she changed her work hours from Sunday to Thursday, so she could spend Sundays by herself with no one bothering her, because that's a very busy office, and she still has not gotten to the handbook or policies and procedures, though she's working on those, and those are coming along. Um, so we are putting in, and we requested forty-one thousand dollars for the HRIS system. It's about thirty thousand dollars per year with a ten thousand dollar implementation fee. That will take so much off of us that we do manually, and it will, you know, really increase efficiencies and effectiveness and accuracy, because shuffling all of those spreadsheets is just a nightmare. Um, under contracted services, besides that, we have EAP solutions, which hadn't gone up in a long time, but they did pop up their rates this year, um, about a thousand dollars. And, let's see, incentive solutions have stayed the same, the attorney's fees have gone down because we are done with our contracts for this year, we did six, we've got two more coming up in twenty-five, um, but we didn't spend anything that we had to last year, because a lot of this is taken over by, um, Groton Utilities. Uh, let's see, posters, we have to post every year, utilities and fuel didn't move, um, the HR department did get a ten percent raise for each person, and, um, the rest of it, the FICA, you know, it's based on the pay, and then the benefits is based on Ron. So, um, you wanted to ask questions about how we came about with new rates for folks this year.
Hold on a second. So I think I'm gonna ask Linda to give high level, and if this is, if you're good with this, we're okay, but if not, I can bring her back at a committee of the whole, depending on how much information that the council needs. So go ahead, high level.
Okay, well, that's really all that I have.
Well, no, no, I'm talking about, you were starting to talk about salary adjustments.
Yes, high level, yes.
Let's talk about that.
Right, so, um, the unions, the unions for the most part this year got a nice bump in pay, and, um, the mayor felt that, and so did I feel, that we, in order to get candidates and keep people, we had to do something with the non-unions, we really, really did. So, um, we did a few things. Uh, Groton Utilities went out and did a market study with a consultant, mostly for theirs, for their employees, but because a lot of the employees are similar on this side, we used their data, and we, the process included going through position descriptions with the supervisors. Um, we did the, the market study, we did a CCM study, we also did, uh, study directly with some of the towns. I've got a cohort of, um, HR directors from different towns around here that we just, um, exchanged a lot of information, it's been really great. Um, and, uh, let's see, and direct queries to those towns if we haven't gotten enough information from CCM. And then we looked at length of service, and, um, gave the mayor the spreadsheet, we talked about it, changed some things, and came up with what we think is a decent market analysis, uh, for the staff, for the non-union staff. Yes?
All right, that's fine, John. Deputy Mayor Devoe?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, just to clarify, to go back to your budget for a second. Um, the annual fee for the HRIS system?
Yes.
Falls under contractual services, correct?
Yes.
Is that where that falls?
Correct.
I just wanna make sure I'm reading that right. Um, I also just want to say, I, I do think you need a management system, having eight billion spreadsheets is not ideal. Management systems will allow you to do more other HR work, um, and I do think that all the efforts in the past year for employee engagement have been good, I've been at a couple of them, um, and I have heard positive feedback from some staff, so, um, I just want to encourage you to keep doing those, because I do think they make a big difference.
Awesome, that's great.
And I think happy employees do a better job, and, um, so whatever we can do to do that, uh, is good. Um, on the salaries, I, I would like to see the data, um, if we can get a copy of that, I am curious to see how that all shakes out and how the analysis was done. Um, I think, you know, some of the increases in the union jobs were directly related to the exact same job at another company that was paying more that we were losing people to, and I don't know that that exact, exactly is the case for all of our positions.
Correct.
And I, so I, um, it just makes me want to look at the, the data a little bit, because I, um, you know, we're responsible for being responsible with the city's money, and I, um, would like to see that.
Okay.
Um, information. I think that's it, I'm, I'm all set.
Okay, Counselor Sheffield?
Um, it kind of appears, it looks like a, a ten percent increase across the board, it seems, in these departments, uh, as far as salaries, it, it looks like somewhere in that area.
There were, um, three different tiers, three, five, and ten percent.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so the, the senior-level staff usually probably around ten, and then?
Well, it's also those that were really underpaid, like dispatchers. We were so, we were underpaying so much, like seven, seven dollars, ten dollars an hour, so we had to, um, you know, pull them up. So it wasn't just senior staff, it wa, it really was to look at what they were making and what the market was telling us.
I mean, it's difficult for, um, government employees to challenge corporate outside.
Absolutely.
They're always gonna give you a higher salary and higher, um, you know, raises than government will give you, so, um, you know, keep that in mind as far as, again, the analysis of pay raises and so forth, corporate will always pay more than the government will, so that's, it's hardly, you know, it's tough to retain great people when outside somebody can get definitely a whole lot more money, so.
And it's worse this year, right? Because there are so many openings everywhere, it's been difficult.
Right, right. Um, as far as, uh, you know, let's say maybe technology advances that you might need in your department, is that something, um, an ARPA type of funding could help to assist as far as, uh, anything like that, as far as technology advancements or anything like that?
Well, first of all, all the money's been, all the money has been allocated. The second thing is, when we're using ARPA funds, we want to make sure that we're meeting the requirements, and we're not, I don't want to use ARPA funds on something that needs continuous funding down the road, right? Because that takes free money, for lack of a better term, and it's not really free, but then it puts a burden on the taxpayers down the road. So, and that has been our criteria all along.
And contractual services, like I said, uh, forty-nine-five compared to sixteen-thousand-two-hundred, that's, um, for what type of, um, additional things going on?
Well, that's the HRIS system, which, like I said, was forty thousand dollars, that debt, that was enough.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right, thank you, that's good.
Counselor Norris?
So I'm glad that you're getting the system, um, because what it does allow you to do is be more efficient.
Absolutely.
And you're gonna hit the last part, to be able to get more done.
No, we want to get more done.
So I appreciate that. With the, the salary survey, um, what I'm looking for in the salary survey is that we did some type of job analysis and comparison, and that we just didn't go job title and population size.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because I could probably, how do I say this? Um, yeah, I, I just think we need to do that, because you may pick a position, and that one position does, across various towns, do completely different things.
No apples to apples out there.
So, right, exactly. And that's what the beauty of private business is, the worst. Um, so, that's what I'm looking for, and I appreciate your time in getting that done, because it's not easy to do.
No.
I also understand that, you know, we do need to pay and do things that attract and keep workers, understanding inflation, the cost of living, all that kind of wonderful stuff. I just want to make sure that we're doing the same methodology and stuff, so thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, that's it, thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second. I won't say to turn my mic.
Hold on, favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Didn't even turn his mic.
We are going to... We're going to move straight into the mayor and council meeting for Monday, April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. The time to roll call, call the meeting in order, eight o'clock, eight oh one, rather. Um, roll call, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Sheffield, Counselor Norris, and Deputy Mayor Devoe are here, salute to the flag, please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, recognition awards and memorials. Okay, moving on, receipt of citizens' petitions, receipt of citizens' petitions, a portion of the council meeting, where the council welcomes comments from citizens, to address the council, please sign a sheet at the table, uh, when you're recognized, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, each presentation being limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit email or written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to the city of Groton, city councils are only asked questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during responses to citizens' petitions portion of the meeting. Is there, there's no one signed up, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak? Mr. Boucher, please come up. State your, uh...
Mike Boucher, sixteen Hillside Avenue, Groton. I...
No, do I have to, want me to say that again? When does the timer start now? Mike Boucher, sixteen Hillside Avenue, Groton. I just returned from an Ivy Court meeting, neighborhood meeting, you know, those are the people that are being evicted, I would like to bring to the city's attention that, um, I heard tonight that there is as many as sixty notices to quit, which basically means evictions. This is happening at Fieldside in the city of Groton and Sutton Park in the city of Groton. Uh, another concern that was brought up is there is a lot of confusion now for the residents with their billing for water. The residents used to be billed, uh, directly through GU, and now the billing is coming through upreality, uh, you probably read about them, I don't think I have to go into that, but the complaints seem to be that the residents are receiving the bills late, they're getting notices that they're behind, um, and so I'd like GU to take a deep breath, and if these bills are related to Ivy Court, um, please look into each resident's concern because they're having a difficult path, even paying their rent, never mind paying their water bill through upreality. So that's a, uh, concern of mine for them, and I told them I'd come here tonight and speak about that, and I'll speak at the GU meeting on Wednesday. Um, and again, another distressing problem, um, in the city of Groton, in, in the town of Groton, and, uh, I guess cities in general, um, diversity and lack of financial stability seems to go hand in hand, and much like the tenants and residents of Ivy Court and Branford Manor, these are difficult times. And I guess since this is Diversity Month, I'd like to make a request that the city think about diversity. We have a percentage of diverse people, I would appreciate if the councils would just get some numbers, even privately, something to think about, how much diversity exists in this, um, city hall as far as employees? What's the diversity count at GU? And obviously, we have another major employer that we could impact, and that's CMEC. And diversity is really hard to find up at CMEC, so these are all areas that you could commit to, to increase diversity, City Hall, GU, and CMEC. And while we're on the topic of CMEC and GU, I'll throw in this little bit, in our electric bill, and we had a, a nice presentation, but it honestly, it's meaningless, because GU submits a bunch of information, and the individual who's in charge of deciding how much we pay simply takes that information and puts it on a spreadsheet and says, this is what we're spending. You were, you were getting close and asking right, right questions, okay, he did a great job, but it goes much deeper than that. When you look at cost of service, you have to look at what cost of service means. There are lots of things in our bill that have nothing to do with providing electric power, and you need to have a much better understanding of what cost of service means, what goes into that bill. I mean, granted, the city gets a large contribution, probably six, I don't know, what is it, Keith, about six-point-nine million, I can't remember, somewhere around there. So you, you should look at that and break it down. Cost of power, okay, that's from CMEC, same situation, there's a lot of add-ons that have nothing to do with electric service, you, I mean, ratepayers are paying for the bills, or whatever bills we have, for the Kentucky Derby, I mean, that's part of cost of power. Cost of power adjustment, same things, a lot of times, cost of power goes up, this happened recently in the city of Groton, and it's not reduced immediately when power drops down. So, I'd like you to take a look at that, and then going to Christine Piazza, you were talking about the poor and how difficult it is to pay these bills. I mean, my rough estimate is probably twenty percent of your electric bill has nothing to do with power. Now, I know we're never gonna change that in the city of Groton, it's a grab-bag, it's too much fun for people, but if we could just change that bill for the poor, because basically you're taxing the poor for all these add-ons, let them pay just for the cost of power, that's it. Um, I don't know if we could talk and meet sometime, you seem generally concerned, but it would be a nice way to treat the poor, don't make them pay for everything on top of their electric bill, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Response to citizen petitions, comments?
Not expecting any, but please someone try to think about things.
Okay, we'll move on to approval of the minutes, take a motion to approve the mayor and council minutes of four one twenty-four.
Still moved.
Second. Are there any corrections of those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, take a motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole of four, four eight twenty-four?
Still moved.
Second.
Are there any corrections of those minutes?
Uh, could I just make a comment?
Okay.
Thank you. I just want to say, so, um, I wanted to appreciate, show appreciation for the well-written notes on our meeting for April eighth. Um, my only question, or maybe it's just a comment in reference to, so I'm trying to understand, uh, member, uh, Clerk McCura was talking about, I know, uh, it was brought up about what we say, what we don't say, and that FOIA said that we really didn't have to include that in our minutes, but now we go back to that, we have quite a bit of dictation typed out on what was said and what was not said, so are we going back to that, or is that just gonna kind of flip-flop?
No, it's a different person that wrote the minutes.
Okay. And, so it depends who's writing the minutes? We don't really have a, um, a protocol that we're following, because I thought last time we discussed it, was like, we're just gonna cut back on it.
Well, that was my intent, we are gonna cut back on the minutes, they do not have to be a dictation, so therefore, we're not gonna do that. Right, we're gonna go to shorter minutes, they do not have to be verbatim.
Okay, all right. I mean, I appreciate the notes, I mean, I think they were well-typed out, I just wanted to see, just to clarify on that, I don't have any issues with that, I just wanted to see if we were just bouncing back and forth, thank you.
All right, anything else, Counselor Sheffield?
I guess maybe the bigger question is, will those minutes that were not documented, uh, those two committee of the whole minutes back in February? those two committee of the whole minutes back in February, will they, can they be amended to actually stipulate a dialogue of, of the, of the council for those two weeks?
Well, those minutes have already been approved, and I do not intend to go change them.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, I'm just, out of curiosity, as far as, you know, if that was a possibility, but, okay.
Any other questions or comments on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, communication reports, Councilor Piazza.
Thank you, Mayor. On the twenty-sixth, I actually met with Tina Daniels from Groton Utilities, kind of bouncing off of what Mr. Boucher was talking about. And she actually sent me an email in reference to those who need assistance. To me, basically what it boils down to, and whoever is listening to the videos, just about reaching out, communicating, is really, really necessary. We did go over quite a bit, I still felt kind of stuck in the line of, there is help out there, but not everybody's going to qualify. And then on the, and I'd still like to move on that, I did give her a couple ideas that she, she wrote down and was going to move on, so I'm happy to hear about that. On March twenty-eighth, I met with, it's a group that is moving to be a nonprofit, and they're investing their time, and they're making a group, investing in youth. And I actually know her from when she actually was on a youth team that I used to actually direct. So she asked me to come on board and share ideas. So I'm hoping to collaborate with them and continue and be on their board, and then collaborate with the youth. They're starting in London, Norwich, Groton, hoping to touch all that. So I met with them on March twenty-eighth, so hoping that we'll go through and be a part and make great things for our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Sheffield?
Nothing to report.
Councilor Norris?
Just a couple of things. Just a couple of things. First one being, I did get a phone call, a resident wanted to know about the EV charging stations in Washington Park, because he and his wife, I guess they live across the street, had started to notice cars parking overnight in the park and using the EV stations. So one, they want to know, is that permissible? And then the next thing was, who pays for those, the use that these cars have, use to charge? So that was one thing. Thank you very much for providing to us my request back on April first with guesstimation of what taxes would be in fiscal year twenty-five, I truly do appreciate that. But it'd also be really nice if we could get something to do with Branford Manor, some kind of report on what has been done for the past year, or all the ACs in, or all the bathroom rents done. Is the mold stuff done, that kind of stuff? Same thing with, so this was interesting, and I don't, they don't go together, but it's worth the conversation. So one, back in April first, I asked for, is it possible to get some type of summary regarding where we stand with projects that we approved with the American Rescue Fund? But then I'm also thinking, based on the budget presentation from planning, and I don't know if planning is part of any committee that we run. It would be nice to know in advance where they fall with their projects. Are they on schedule, they falling behind? So that would be nice to, just to think about in the future. And then the last thing I have, realizing that the police department budget was, I guess, reduced by the town, approximately twenty-five thousand. It would be nice to know, how does that affect the police department's fiscal year twenty-five financial plan and goals? Is it whatever that twenty-five thousand was attached to, that, does that get removed? What else is potentially getting removed? Are we going to add twenty-five to their budget from somewhere else? But twenty-five thousand dollars is a, it's a lot of money. So something's not getting done unless they find the money from somewhere else. So that's everything, I have your honor.
Okay, I'll address all those in a moment. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. On April fifth, I attended a Chamber of Commerce event where the, the mayor and the town manager and the first-elect woman of Stonington spoke and kind of gave us synopsis of what's happening in each of the towns. And it was a really informative time. I know, you know, I don't always have time to check in on what's happening in the town or in the town of Stonington, even though it's right next door. So that was a lot of good information, and I know they do that event, is it called the State of the Cities?
Well, it's, so State of Mystic, Stonington, and Groton. Which is kind of funny, because Mystic splits Stonington and Groton, because really Mystic doesn't exist. No offense to those people that live in Mystic, but you're either in Stonington, or you're in Groton.
But I just want to say, that is an annual event, this is the first year I've ever gone. And it's a breakfast, so it's early, it's at seven thirty in the morning. But it was really informative, and I would just encourage people, I'm personally going to try to go to some more chamber events because I think it's helpful to get to know also some of those other business connections. And the Chamber of Commerce is doing a really good job staying engaged with the public on both business end and the public official end. So I just wanted to thank the chamber, I thought that was a great event, and Bruce did a great, great job. The only other thing that I have is that the food box distribution is on the twenty-sixth of this month at twelve thirty at St. John's. If you would like to volunteer, I know we've had a few weeks in the past where we've had groups, certain groups that usually volunteer that haven't been able to. If you're interested in volunteering, feel free to show up at twelve, and you can sign up, and you just have to sign a little volunteer sheet. And if you need food, as always, contact the mayor's office, the clerk's office. You can contact any, myself via email, if that's easier, or the mayor's office, and we will get you food. And that is all I have.
And the mayor's office number is eight six zero four four six four one zero three. That's eight six zero four four six four one zero three, let us know, and we will get food delivered to you if you can't make it. Lineal Director, do you have anything?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. All right, a couple of things. So the EV charging station in Washington Park, there is no charge. Right now, there is no charge here at the municipal building. We are going to change the heads over to EV, over to Washington Park. And once we get the heads changed to this, to the ones similar to what we have here, we will then start charging. So as far as overnight, I got to reach out, I got to, I don't know the answer to that. So I'll, I'll take a look. So your question about Branford Manor and the CIPs, you asked once before, but we've had full cows, and I, because you've only asked about it the last few weeks, right? So that is going to be discussed at the next cow. So we're going to talk about the mold, we're going to talk about the remediation, we're going to talk about default, we're going to talk about all that, and it's going to be, hopefully, it'll be a fairly detailed discussion and be able to answer your questions, and the questions that are out there. CIPs, Ron and I are talking, we will, Ron's already working on some RFPs. And so we'll go through, we'll bring the sheet back, and we'll walk through where we are. We've made some progress, but in some cases, we're getting ready to get ready. Meaning, it takes us some time to get the RFPs, and we'll talk about that next week as well. There is a ribbon cutting on Wednesday at noon for the electric charging stations here. We're also going to highlight our new electric vehicle that the building inspector drives. Let's see, the police budget. So the police budget and highway were both cut twenty-five thousand dollars. So I talked to the chief, talked to Ron, and right now, the chief said that he will have to look, so when the town council cuts either one of those budgets, they can't line item veto, just like you guys don't line item veto. They can make suggestions on where they think it went, where they want to take it out of, and one of the things they talked about was the vehicles. But we need the vehicles, so we're going to fund those three vehicles. The chief has talked to me about managing overtime and being able to still be able to come in on budget with that. So unless that changes, I'll let you know. And we can talk to the chief again before and see if we need to do something under this budget. Because I can always come back to this council and ask you to add twenty-five thousand dollars. If I do that, then what that does is that forces taxes to go up, you know, because there's an impact on the mill rate. I know that we are going to look at areas that we can cut here as well. So we're looking at that overall. So a couple of things, opening day, Little League opening day is on the twentieth at ten o'clock, you're all invited to that. And we had a, so council recently recently approved the work for the front landing and for the windows. We had a pre-construction meeting on Friday, and they want, they're going to do this in phases. So they're going to do the front landing first, the cement work first, and they're going to put the windows on order. The windows are not in order yet, it'll take sixteen weeks for the windows to come in, and then they'll start replacing the windows, including the windows in the storefront. But, so let's talk about how the storefront, how this landing impacts us. They're looking, I do not have specific start dates yet, that's one of the things that I've asked for. But, and I have a meeting with internal staff tomorrow to address the things that I'm about to bring up to you. So right now, the front landing is probably going to be closed for three to four weeks. So I have two issues, actually I have several issues that we have to address. One is ingress and egress in general. The second part is ADA accessibility, because that ramp is now, once you get to the top of the ramp, there's nowhere to go, because they're going to be deconstructing and then constructing for that period of time. The ramp that we have back here that you've seen, you can't put a vehicle on it, and the, it's too steep to meet ADA requirements. So one of the things we're going to talk about tomorrow is, so for my meeting tomorrow, let me get to it real quick. As I said, we had a pre-construction meeting, the project is probably two or three weeks out. Storefront is about three to four weeks in duration. During that time, the front access is secured. We need to discuss general access, business hours, handicapped access, egress, and other. So tomorrow, we're going to be talking about how do we manage the business? And if it was going to be a week or maybe two, I would consider shutting the city, shutting the municipal building down because it's going to be four, three to four weeks, probably four weeks, I'm not ready to do that. So we're going to have to figure out how we're going to do this, and we're talking about, so we have customer service that needs, that's going to be addressed. We also have beach passes, those kind of things. So one of the things that I'm going to ask people, to ask us to look at, is for ADA accessibility is curbside service. So we're going to evaluate that tomorrow and see what that means, and see what other suggestions come up. The other thing that I want to do is figure out ingress, egress, and the impact on staff, but the impact on customers, and we may, if we can't figure out how to get people in and out, because I don't want everybody coming in through the police area, walking all the way around through in order to get things done. What we may do is we may end up going to appointment only, because we did that successfully during COVID. We demonstrated that we could do that. We've also demonstrated that if we need to do meetings, we can do them either with Teams or with Zoom. So this is an initial report to the council. I recognize that as a result of this report, you probably have more questions than you do answers. I still have questions, but staff is getting together tomorrow, and then I'll come back and I'll brief you next week on where we're going to go with this. So I wanted to give you an update on that, because that was, I want to get that information out. Once we decide what we're going to do and how we're going to do it, one, I'll make sure council knows, but two, we're going to make sure that we get it in newsletter, we get it on Facebook, get it out on the website, and get it out as widespread as we possibly can, so that the public is well aware of what's going on. But we, this is a case of they're going to chip up all the concrete, we're going to put new concrete in, and we're putting a drain trough in there, and we're putting heating, we're putting a heating pad, a heating arrangement in there so that we don't have to use salt or a salt-like product, because those things were detrimental to the thresholds of the doors, the frames, and of the windows. So that's what's prompting this whole thing. And that's it. All right, so where are we? Committee referrals, so we have, actually, I'll let you make it, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Depot.
I want to refer to Beach and Parks, looking at the tennis and pickleball court arrangement and potential sound barrier, vision barrier.
I think we already.
Is that not what you wanted me to refer today?
No, I thought that's what we, I think I already have that on there, I will write that down to make sure that's on there. The tennis court status, because basic, because it was brought up as a result of the citizen that came in. So I thought we did it then, but I will make sure it's on there, tennis courts and the current status and going forward.
Well, and the, the effect of the tree trimming, and if that needs to be, if we need to replace those trees with something.
Right.
Because it's, it's not just the, well, to me, part of it is a privacy issue, because I have played tennis there a lot, and you, the trees were a good visual barrier between the courts and the house, houses that are back there, and for both parties, so.
I understand what you're, what you're looking at. It's not just about the tennis courts, it's about the privacy, whether we can do a fence, or we're going to do something back there. I think I already have that on the Parks, our Parks and Recs list on that committee, but I'll verify that it's there.
Was there something else you thought I was going to refer?
Yes.
Am I forgetting?
So for public safety, we're going to refer to public safety, the residential parking that goes along with the ordinance that I'm presenting to council tonight. So the ordinance sets the stage for residential parking, and then the resolution actually lists the streets of which will be in that. And that was going to be referred to public safety for review of public safety and then discussion, and then the determination of whether or not we needed to go to a, have a public hearing on that, and then bring it to, bring it to committee of the whole. Is that accurate?
Yes, it'd be good if I checked my own notes. I, I just want to say to that point, for anyone that's listening, my intent is to have public comment at the next committee meeting. So we don't normally have that on the agenda for our committee meetings. We usually only do it for special circumstances, but my intent is to allow the public to come to the committee meeting if they would like and make comment on that. And right now, I believe that's slated for the second Monday in May.
No.
Right? Because usually the second Monday of April, and we pushed it off.
Well, it's usually the second Monday of the first month of the quarter.
Right.
So we can, we can have a special meeting. So we can, we can have a special meeting in May, a special group meeting in May. For public safety. Because other than that, the next meeting would be November, March, April, May, June, July.
Right. I think that's too far away.
Okay, we can have a special meeting in May.
So that would be May 13th.
Okay.
So I just want to encourage people to come, and is it possible to get that on the Facebook page?
Yes, once we.
Once, I mean, once we put the notice out.
Yes.
Because I would like to, you know, I say this all the time, us six counselors can't be everywhere in the city, so it would be helpful if we had input from people who live on those streets. I personally do drive on all the city streets, but I try to pay extra attention down there, knowing that we're going to be making those decisions. So, you know, anyone that has any input, please feel free to come to that meeting, or if you can't attend that meeting, please email myself. You can email the police chief or the mayor's office. We'll get it all to the right people. I would like to solicit as much comment on it as possible.
Any other committee referrals? Counselor Sheffield.
Just a comment about our group committee meetings, that they are always open to the public, so no one is restricted to come to any of the group meetings that we have, so.
That is correct.
Yeah.
But there's typically not public comment at the meetings. That's up to the chairs.
Well, normally, normally, we'll invite somebody, and we have them speak, so it's nothing to where.
I understand.
Yeah, you know that.
Any other committee referrals? Okay, moving on, new business, Counselor Piazza.
Thank you. Resolution 24-4-58. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council approve the refund of property taxes to EAN Holdings LLC DBA Enterprise Rent-A-Car, One Financial Plaza Suite 1905, Hartford, Connecticut, in the amount of $3,051.89. I so move.
We have a motion and a second. This is new. I'll let Ron speak to it.
So I think you've all seen these before. These are, this is enterprise, as was sent in the resolution. So these were vehicles that were on the grand list when it was done. Some, they paid the taxes on these vehicles, and then they subsequently either sold the vehicle, relocated them to a different location, so they're no longer in the city of Groton. So therefore, they're getting the refund of the taxes. And due to the amount being over the $500, it does come to council for, for approval. But it's something that these vehicles are no longer taxable within, within the city. So it's just a refund of taxes that they paid.
Questions or comments on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And then Deputy Mayor Depot.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution R-24-4-59. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council approve the refund of property taxes to EAN Holdings LLC DBA Enterprise Rent-A-Car, One Financial Plaza Suite 1905, Hartford, Connecticut, in the amount of $1,911.51. I so move.
We have a motion and a second.
So this is the exact same thing. It's, there was just two different resolutions because they came through as two different refund reimbursements, and they have to be signed off on by the, by the clerk at the governing bodies who, how it was approved. So that's why there's two separate resolutions.
Does that answer your question? Okay. All right, any other questions or comments on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Counselor Sheffield?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution R-24-4-60. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council waived the bid requirement and authorized and approved a two-year contract extension with Honkers LLC, 14 Dimmock Road, Waterford, Connecticut, for service from July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2026, for the continuation of goose control service at City Parks for a cost of $700 per week. I so move.
We have a motion and a second. This was discussed during the committee of the whole. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention.
Abstention, please.
Okay, then that motion fails, because 301, I have to have four affirmative votes in order for that to pass. So I will determine what I need to do and bring, I will probably bring this back to the council. That's not true. I will bring this back to the council. Counselor Norris.
R-24-4-61. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council authorize and approve the expenditure to HO Penn Machinery Company Incorporated, 225 Richard Street, Newton, Connecticut, for the inspection, service, and repair to the 2003 CAT excavator in an amount not to exceed $10,699.19 to be paid from the funds in the approved fiscal year 2024 highway operating budget. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This was discussed during the committee of the whole. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 24-4-62. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council provisionally authorize Mayor Keith Hedrick to waive the bid process and enter into a contract with Street Plans, 5879 Sunset Drive, Suite 2, South Miami, Florida, for project management and coordination of a Bridge Street-North Street pilot demonstration to identify temporary and phased improvements to the public right of way, to collaborate with Connecticut Department of Transportation, and develop a final Bridge Street-North Street pilot demonstration plan for a total cost of $15,000.01 to be paid from the City of Groton Planning Department fiscal year 2324 budget. I so move.
We have a motion and a second. This was discussed during the committee of the whole. Is there any additional discussion?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Norris.
Can you please remind me why we're waiving the bid process on this?
Because we've used this group before.
Okay.
We had two, we've used them twice in the past, so that's why we waived the bid Deputy Mayor Depot.
Just to clarify, is the project that they're working on also is a continuation of the work that they already did, correct?
That's true, it is a continuation, that's true. That's the other thing, is continuation of the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone, thank you all. So where are we here? So any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution R-24-4-63. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council initially approve an amendment to ordinance number 215, an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the city of Groton. I so move.
We have a motion and a second. This was discussed during the committee of the whole. Is there any additional discussion? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you. I just want to say that I, we've been talking about this for a long time, and I'm glad that we are getting the parking regulations changed, because I think that's part of the issue that we have with parking, is that we have some conflicting signs that are easy to disobey, I think, when people are choosing where to park. And I know that a lot of residents are going to be happy that we're making moves on this, so thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Counselor Sheffield?
Resolution R-24-4-64. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council authorize and approve a donation of $400.01 to Fleet Reserve Association, Branch 20, Groton, 242 Thame Street, Groton, Connecticut. I so move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This was discussed during the committee of the whole. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Counselor Norris?
R-24-4-65. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council approve a MOU outline in the collaboration between the city of Groton and the Connecticut Sun to revitalize and renovate the community basketball court at Washington Park. I so move.
Second.
Second. Oh, second, we're all into it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This was discussed during the committee of the whole. The changes were in your packet and highlighted. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:41. Okay, thank you, council.
Well done, people.
It was a full day.